6:00 PM, Town of Ayr, Zoning Board of Appeals. Wednesday, July 17th, 2024, hybrid meeting agenda. This meeting/hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and our participation via Zoom is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting/hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt a virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in a specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Meeting will be live on Zoom. Public may access the proceedings by joining Zoom, meeting ID 85797287177, or by calling For additional information about remote participation, please contact Samantha Benoit, Administrative Coordinator, at zba@ayr.ma.us, or call 978-772-8220, extension 114, prior to the meeting. First item on the agenda, is you approve of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda of Wednesday, July 17th, 2024.
Second, call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, continued public hearing, application for variance, plat builders. One down, sir.
Thank you.
You have spoken with Mastat?
Yes, the MBTA. So I had an opportunity to talk to three of their representatives. They couldn't have been nicer to explain their position about it, which I understand. And I explained to them, from my perspective, I guess what I learned in the conversation is they have some challenging areas in Massachusetts that they have to work through where they don't have as much room between the railroad tracks and property lines as they do here, at least along this section of Central Avenue. And so it's important to them that the setbacks get held whenever possible. I did measure the distance from our property line roughly, you know, using 100-foot tape. It's 94 and a half feet from our property line to the edge of the active railroad tracks. Then there's a section of debunked railroad tracks that trees are growing up through. And then there's an access road. The center line of the access road to our property line is about 44 feet, and then our property line is. They continue to have the position that they disagree with any reduction of property line setbacks.
You're saying there's 130 feet from one side to the other?
No, no, about 95 feet from the edge of the active railroad tracks to our property line.
What's the other way, other side? Did you measure going the other side?
So the other side is wetlands.
It's like a pond.
Pond.
Oh, okay, okay.
But as they described, as they go closer to the city, there's areas where they have this swath, I don't know, it's 20 feet wide, and then they have properties on either side and fences and that kind of stuff that they have to deal with. So it is very tight. And I could imagine if they're trying to do construction along there, then they have those challenges of... So I also continue to explain to them that we're currently using the property to its fullest. And if the town, part of the reason why we decided to go this route and to build a pole barn here is we feel like our property starts to butt up against residential properties. And the alternative is to put shipping containers on the property here to store our stuff and keep it dry. And as far as I know, there's no zoning laws against parking a truck or a shipping container there in the same location to store things. It's still on our property. And so I guess either way, we're going to occupy the space with our stuff. We're currently occupying the space. It's just whether or not it's a storage container or a, something more farm-like, a pole barn.
Within your property line, or?
No, it's all within our property line. It's just, if I am going to build a structure like a pole barn, it needs to fit on the property outside of the setback requirements. If I put a shipping container there, it does not have to, it can be within the setback.
It's a workaround.
Right, and so I can do that, and I just thought it would be nicer knowing that I've got residential houses around us.
Sure. I know if it's like a, like a, if you have a trailer for a tractor.
That's different.
That's different. But I'm sure a shipping container, well, I'm not sure. It might be allowed. But the biggest, so I took a ride through there today.
Okay.
Went around back.
Yeah.
I saw the structure that exists. You know, my intention was, at the last meeting, I don't really have an issue with this. I think this could be the perfect opportunity to put a time limit on a variance, if granted, right?
Was he telling us a temporary?
Because it was a storage issue, right, with the storage containers?
Ultimately, we'd love to get all of our equipment inside the building when we have the room for it, once our temporary rental storage customers have moved out.
So, that being said, I am in favor of it. My only concern, because you're a town company here.
Yeah.
If we were to grant it, obviously, they have the right to appeal it. They're the state, they have time, attorneys to do that.
Yeah.
The other big thing, that, you know, I'm just looking at this map. When I drove through there today, there's, and I'm assuming it's your stuff, you've got stuff that's definitely on their side of the line. I don't care.
Yeah, no, not the state.
I just don't want you to have issues with them as a result of it.
We also noticed that the, a budding property to the left, their stockade fence goes far onto their property.
A lot of, that, that strip of commercial on Central, at least one more of them is as close as you're proposing to be, if not maybe a little less, but I'm not opposed to it. I think if we were to grant it, we have topography on our side because the shape of this lot, it cuts up really right up to the building.
They were, they were talking about, when we were on the phone with them last time, they were talking about they needed 60 feet. You remember that conversation?
I do, but I-
And he's telling me that there's 94.
And Sam, the road, so you know that access road by the gym there?
Yep.
It does cut along the backside of this, but like I said, they've gone above and beyond their property line with storage, they still have full access to that road. The MBTA does. So, you know, I don't, I didn't have an issue with it last time. I don't, and, and, you know, when we looked at the comments, the fire department wasn't overly concerned, and I know a lot of people were concerned about the fire department.
They liked the idea of consolidation.
Yeah. Let's see. Conscom, it's outside of the buffer zones. I mean, I'm in favor of it, but I'd be willing to hear the opposition.
Did you read the letter from? Just now. Did you read it?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, sir?
So, as a town planner, when I reviewed this, the application.
All right.
The first requirement, obviously, so Mike, I think you believe that it does meet the requirement, but based on my review of Central Ave, the properties all along Central Ave have the same burden as he does. So it does not make it a unique burden.
Okay.
Which is also something that the MBTA did raise within their letter.
Yeah.
It does set a precedent now for future properties along that path that have the same shop, shape factor as they do, to try to request the same thing.
But it doesn't set a precedent though, right? Because technically, our-
Technically, you're right. Technically, it doesn't, but in the sense of outside eyes, they'll feel they want to also apply for the same thing because their, their lots are also shaped as his is. So this is the problem where it's not an actually unique-shaped lot.
So the only thing, and when I say unique shape, all I'm talking about is-
Do you want me to pull it up?
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. And I realize, you know, in light of, we're trying, as we make our decisions now, I want to try to stick to shape, topography. And so with this one, I'm going with shape, and I'll show you why.
Can you put them on the mapper?
Something, I don't remember if it's in here.
It's in there.
Nope, no, it's not. Worth a shot.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Oh, that's right, you can have-
I don't remember. This is how I find it sometimes.
There we go. Oh, there we go. Much easier. I was gonna do. Let's get the word.
Da-da-da.
Yeah. So it's going to be.
It's 2710.
I can bind it without another one.
Yeah. You can just do, you can do all of Central Ave, actually.
Why is this?
It's that center one here, right there. And then we'll close it out, and then something's already on.
Yeah, you can. All right. So see that little cut-up?
Yeah, this one right here.
That's what I'm talking about with shape, right? So, and again, you can convince me it's a stretch, but these commercial properties up to, you know, the Groton-Harvard Road is flush, 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 and then we have that cut-up and it comes back down.
Yeah.
I don't know why it was shaped that way, and I'm sure it's been that way for 100 years.
Yeah, so-
But I'd say it's unique to at least that three parcel stretch. And I, if we go down Central a little further, we don't have another cut-up like that.
Until we get to the residential. So there is, like, this one does kind of have it, this one kind of goes up again into here.
Yeah.
That's the MBTA. So it does kind of have that same shape. It goes this straight here and then kind of goes up towards the property, towards the building, and then comes back straight again.
Yep.
So, yeah, it may not have that exact same shape, but it does have that in portion that goes straight along the building.
Yeah.
I mean, in my-
Where did you, oh, sorry.
Sorry. In my review, I mean, just based on what I see, it's not unique.
Okay.
But, you know, it's up to interpretation, really.
Got it.
Where did you measure your 94 feet?
So I went to the property line where the pole barn is proposed. The surveyors had put a-
Yeah.
Right there. Correct.
Yep. So from that red line to-
To the edge of the purple.
Oh, okay, okay, because that's a spur. That yellow line's a spur, right?
No, that's the access road.
Oh, I thought that was a spur.
That's the access road.
I think the spur is the thing that has the trees grown through it.
Yeah, yeah, there's a section of two, there's two sections of, looks like debunked tracks that are grown in.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's hear from the MBTA.
Yes, sir?
No?
I, this is Ronald Evert with the MBTA.
Yes, sir.
No, just, we, just for the record, we met with the applicant yesterday afternoon to just review and discuss MBTA's position on the matter. We are still likely to be accorded in support of the existing rear yard setback requirements of 30 feet. Obviously, with the furthest of board, whether you, on, on, in many terms, appropriate, I don't know if that variance is appropriate or not, but we did, we did meet the odds in that this came last week, MBTA's last month. We had a good conversation. Our position hasn't changed. We appreciate the board's consideration on our position. Thank you.
That being said, how opposed are you to a temporary structure? Versus long-term? Or is it, does it, it doesn't change your opinion?
Any type of fixed structure, that's footings, foundations, except, not foundation in this case, but any that's a fixed structure, being where we, that would, that's permanent, not a reable, so I guess in theory, if it's a temporary structure, we may be okay with that. We're not, with the use of storage containers, that's fine, because we're, we're, we propose any type of fixed, permanent structure, what can be, nice permanent, or be there for our, for the future. That's been, that's our position.
Okay, thank you. John? What do you think?
Well, first, I just want to ask the question. You talked about storage containers.
Yeah.
So if you have a temporary right to put these structures up, when they come down, there'll be no requirement for containers, right?
That's the idea. That's the intent. That, I can't tell you exactly what the future brings, but like we talked about, it was always our intent, it's always been our intent to get our belongings indoors, they're more secure, they're better protected from the weather, there's bonuses to that. But today, our equipment is, is, like our scaffolding, we have these nets that are required by OSHA to keep people from falling off scaffolding, and they just don't do well in the sun and in the, in the weather, they just don't last as long.
The snow fence? The orange snow-
No, these are special safety fences for people up high, in case they fall, you know, restrain them. It's stuff like that, it's the hardware on the scaffolding that rusts and falls apart, it just doesn't last as long. And so as we watched this stuff sit outside, because we don't have a place for it indoors, that was the motivation to do this. And knowing today that this structure requires a permit, requires zoning board of approval, we are certainly trying to find some temporary way to solve our problem and also not be a burden to the town with a structure that shouldn't, isn't ideal.
So when you bought the property, the business use did not include storage?
That was not the intent, yeah. Correct.
But it's not part of the plan and-
Right.
And you really-
No, that's not, that's not correct.
Well, like I said last month-
It was part of moving and storage. So it did include storage, but it didn't include the storage that he wants to use.
No, I mean, they're not, you didn't buy this building with the intent of having a storage business there.
Correct.
That is correct, yeah. Yeah, it was a, a necessary to buy the building was to-
So whatever business licenses you require, storage isn't one of them.
Yeah.
So how long do you think you really need? And or what do you think is a reasonable notice to tell these people that their contracts are up and they're going to have to find alternative storage?
Yeah, and so we've been solving that by talking to people, increasing rents. We've gotten rid of about 100 contracts so far.
How many?
Oh, probably out of 140, so we're down to like 40 container, of these, I don't know if you've ever been in there, these, these giant crates of people's belongings. And so we now have an area of our 26-tall-foot building, it's probably 40 by 60, that is being occupied by these crates. And, yes, ultimately, we could call everyone up tomorrow and say, "Sorry, we're closing, you have to complete your stuff." That is an option. We've, with the buying of a building, moving into it, the rental income has helped to offset some of the company costs, and so there's been some benefit to having that kind of wind down slowly.
I understand, but that's, that's really not part of the business plan. So again, what, how reasonable, what is your reasonable?
Originally, I said seven years. That got talked down last month from five years, and I think I even heard three years. I would, I would take, I would take what I could get, I think, as a temporary solution.
So you've gotten rid of two-thirds of them already?
Correct.
So I, I don't know why more than a couple of years is really necessary for the structure.
If, I'd propose at least three. You know, they've got 40 of these things left, let them wind it down, but I'll be honest, I'm not inclined to grant beyond that, right?
Sure.
My intent here is that you're coming to town, bringing jobs, improving that building, that's great. But like John said, your plat builders isn't plat builders in storage, it's, you guys are builders. And I think the safety concern is, you know, top of the list for me with the scaffolding and everything else, but it would be a temporary fix with the intent that you get those folks out.
Is the Conex a viable option in lieu of a pole barn?
I'm not sure I'm familiar with that.
What's a Conex?
Sealand Containers, the shipping containers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Those are, those are called, those are Conex.
So, yeah, so we would go that route. Like I said at the beginning, I just think that is a less attractive solution occupying the exact same space. And so I don't understand the MBTA's concern of having a structure in their way of them operating their business if I have shipping containers there instead of a pole barn. And I, I would think that my neighbors would rather see a pole barn than shipping containers, my residential neighbors.
What residential neighbors do you have?
So all the, so across the street and continuing down the other side is all residential.
They're not visible from the street, though.
Yeah, that's-
Your pole barn, are the, are the Conex, really?
Oh, certainly, yeah.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, if you drive down Central Avenue away from center of town and look back.
But you're, you're past the-
You can see right through the stockade fence.
You're past the fence, right?
I mean, I'll be honest, when I pulled back there today, I couldn't see what I saw until I pulled back.
Okay.
But, you know, again, I'm a-
So you're past, you're past the fenced area.
What's that?
Past the fenced area. So it's behind the building?
Yeah.
On the corner of the building?
Yeah.
So there's a stockade fence-
Right.
Beyond our property, or-
Oh, it's beyond yours?
Well, it's next to our property, yeah. It's not part of our property.
It's the butters.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it is a, it is an option.
Did you want to add something? Ron?
This had come to the board previously, as it should have. I doubt we would have, there'd been a strong possibility that we wouldn't have allowed this, especially being such a great, I mean, right up on the property line. Usually, we don't give mercy for stuff that's right on top of the property line. If it's-
Actually, we have.
We have, well, shame on us.
Oh, we have.
It's not a good idea to use up all your, your, your clearance, allowed clearance, just. You know, pole barn is, you know, structures, I can understand the MBTA's position, you know, once you make a structure, there's a structure. And I guess I would, you know, there's no hardship here because it was created by the Anything, I'd be very short period of time for them to, you know, a temporary, stay or whatever.
What do you, what do you think a temporary limit would be?
Two years is plenty.
So when I came in tonight, I was thinking the temporary solution, two or three years max for me, would have been the way to go, but hearing that there are, there is an alternative with the storage containers, the storage containers would fit all the equipment?
Yeah.
Do you want, okay. Hearing, hearing that, and there always is a disincentive to take down structures, even if they're intended to be temporary, so I sort of reversed my position. And would be more in favor of, I mean, I don't think something that, the issue of attractiveness for this side of the Central Ave is, is a compelling issue. That's it.
I kind of agree with that. I think, I think your Conex is a viable option, and it makes everything else a mute point.
What does Marilyn think? Even though she can't vote.
Marilyn, would you like to chime in?
Yes, I would.
Please do.
You bought this property probably because, I'm guessing, the storage was attractive, you need a big space with your business.
Yeah, not storage necessarily, but we do main, we do manufacturing, yeah.
Yeah. You're planning to use the Conex as part of your addition anyway. You're doing the pole barn, and then you're putting a roof over two Conex structures also. Is that correct?
That, that is-
So you're already using those right now?
Yeah.
I know you have at least one back there.
Correct.
Yeah. I'm not seeing, the pole barn, I have a couple problems with it. For one thing, it's like two inches from the property line. It also, you have no 360 access around the building if that pole barn's there either. So-
The pole barn's going inside it.
You could, you could make it around that pole barn.
Could.
100%. Yeah.
If, if- If you go on the railroads property?
Well, if it's only six inch, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, because what, what happens is, like, right along the pole barn is that access road. And you could, you could, if you had to, a fire truck, no chance.
But what if the railroad puts a wire fence there all of a sudden, you know?
Could have a problem.
Then that's a problem.
Sure.
If it was, you know, you had mentioned you wanted to make it a temporary structure, but I think unless a very strict condition is written in the variance, it would be no real motivation for you to give up those seven-year leases, because it's good income for you, and I can understand that, too. I'm just thinking that if you want to do temporary Conex for your storage, it seems that it would work, as opposed to putting a semi-permanent pole structure there that would have to come down in two years, I don't see the hardship that requires the pole barn.
I think that's, I think that's a pretty fair assessment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't-
If we didn't have, if we had no other option, if there was no viable option, I'd say, yeah, probably two years or three years or something like that would, would work. But the fact of the matter is, we have a viable option that negates the problem.
Yeah, I mean, I, one way or the other, it's fine by me. Truthfully, I think a two- or three-year temporary structure, and again, the shirt says plat builders. If anybody can take down a structure as quick as they can put it up, I assume it's these folks. But I totally understand the way the board feels about it. But that being said, somebody needs to make a motion. It sounds like to deny, that ain't gonna be me.
Even if you deny, you do still need to go through the three-
Yes.
Things. And I forgot to print them. I forgot to print them.
I have them.
Oh, thank you.
Excuse me.
Perfect. All right. Whoever wants to make it. Whoever wants to make it. Do we have any public comment?
I see, I didn't see anybody raise their hand. Let me just ask you one time. Do you want to withdraw your application so we don't have to vote on it, and you can proceed with your Conex boxes, or do you want us to vote on your pole barn?
Well, he can still do the Conex boxes, can't he?
Yeah, but if we vote on it, then he can't come up with a different plan before us for a few years, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if he changes it by one inch, I think he could.
I, I, I...
You have a point.
Yes.
That's your call.
Sure, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. And, so, yeah, so I think I'm happy to withdraw.
I make a motion, we accept the withdrawal of 109 Central Avenue. Yes, sir?
Can I just make a note that it's a withdrawal without prejudice?
Oh, absolutely, I haven't finished my, I didn't get the chance to, let me finish first.
Just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure he had the...
All right. Um, where did I lose it? Oh, that's my, where the hell did I lose my cover sheet? Yes, yes, yes. I make a motion to accept the withdrawal of plat builders' application for a variance. For 109 Central Avenue, air mass.
Second.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, I'm, do it anyways. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous, it's carried. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Send you a summary letter.
All right, great, thank you, Samantha.
All right. All right. Yeah, minutes.
Well, there it is. Okie dokie. Next item on the agenda. Oh, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Yes.
On plat builders.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from 26 June. I did not read them. John?
Well, I have a couple.
Okay.
That's just where I am.
You can fix the date on the copies you guys have.
I was just gonna say that.
I fixed.
My only catch.
You got it.
Go right ahead. You probably got the same one, so...
I just have one.
Oh, you have one?
Yeah.
Okay, which one?
Page two, um, about seven lines from the bottom, or eight lines. C. Brown noted that there are a number of buildings in the area that are closed to the rail line. I think he meant closer.
Yep, that's one I had.
John, don't leave her hanging. John, don't leave her hanging.
You get high five?
I have two now. Yeah, you have, the date is May 15th, that should say June 26th.
Yes, I fixed that one already.
Okay. And on the last page, board discussion, them given, asked, when make a decision? I think that should be making your decision. And we're done here.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes of the meeting as amended, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
You get a second there?
Second.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
You got it.
Now we can say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Aye.
All right, next item on the agenda, board officer reorganization. State law says we select a chairman every year.
Chair and a vice chair.
And a clerk.
No, the bylaws is chair and vice chair, the state law says chair.
Fair enough.
Yes, I read it. Distension? No? Okay. So I can stay, or we can change. What would you like to do?
Obviously, you're willing to stay.
Huh?
Obviously, you're willing to stay.
Well, I'll do it for another year.
Are you willing to stay?
Do we want to change?
Stay.
Let's go back, all right, let's start at square one. Do we want to change the organization, yea or nay?
I think if we do it, it'll have to be something that we change every year, right? So some of, like, in Concord, we have a board of, I work for the town of Concord, and I work with the Board of Assessors, so they have a revolving chairmanship every year. So it goes by seniority. So if we were to start over today, right, say your chair today, Ron's vice chair, just on seniority, I would be...
Same way as the planning, the board of selectmen.
Correct, correct, and it's common with a lot of boards. But if we do that, you know, we should...
I don't know how well that would work, though.
Man?
You know, I mean, we have, we have an excellent board, the way we have.
I agree.
And in the future, if we have new board members that are not as strong as we are, it could be a, a pitfall. That would be my only concern. Case in point is the, the board of selectmen. You, you vote for your board of selectmen, you have different selectmen with different strengths.
Sure.
So you really have to be careful about what you're doing. They get assigned, well, they don't get assigned amongst themselves, they say, okay, we're gonna rotate around and round and round, and in some instances, I feel it's better than others.
I mean, if we were to do it here, the challenge would be if, you know, one member, so say I step down. Now, granted, we're lucky we have an alternate, but if we didn't, we have a new member come on, you know, it can shuffle up that cycle of you're next, you're next, you're next, you know, that carousel, because you can't have somebody who just came on become vice chair in their second year, or maybe you can, I, you know, I don't know.
The board does it, guy gets elected, boom.
You know, and, and as long as they're not chairing that first year, they'll be okay. But, and you'll have people who don't want to chair either, right? It's, it's a lot of work. You have to do a lot of, a lot of prep, there's a lot of pushback from residents and applicants and stuff.
So you're suggesting we change our methodology?
No, I'm saying if we were to, that's the only other way I can think of.
I would be, I would be opposed to that, I really would, only because of why I said it's, I mean, we have a good board.
Yeah.
And if I'm gone, or if I drop out, or John or Ron, or anything happens to any of us, and they take, and we get a new member, the new member might not have the same strength characteristics that the rest of us do.
Yeah, I mean...
That's my only, that's just an opinion.
I, I, I don't disagree with you. Ron will remember twenty, was it 2013, when we had the big shakeup?
I remember that.
I went to my first meeting, Sam, by the second meeting, Ron and I were the only two left. It was, it was out the door. It was chaotic, you know?
Everybody quit.
It was, it was something else. And, and you're right, it did, the next, the next few meetings, it took a while for this board to get back on track, and we did. And I think we've run pretty well since.
So do we want to change how we do this? That's the first question.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either. Jess?
I'm, I'm, I don't want to be chair.
Jess?
I'm, I'm good.
Ron?
Good, here, I'd like to hear from Marilyn.
You always want to hear from Marilyn.
Fresh persp...
She, yes.
I'm not saying you're weak. You can't see, but...
I can still hear a little. Um, my husband is on the conservation commission, and after his first meeting, or very shortly after there, he ended up being the chair, and it was a struggle. I mean, he had no experience, and it was, it was a steep learning curve. And everybody in the board really helped him, but it did take him a couple of years to be comfortable with it. And I think, I'd like the idea of the rotating it, because everybody would get that experience with learning how to do, running a meeting, which takes real skill. Um, but...
A lot of people don't want to do it.
Yeah, but that's the other part of it. It's like, it's like Mike says, you know, some people's skills are better at some things than others.
True.
So if, if it's kind of working, maybe, don't fix what isn't broken, maybe.
So that being said, do we want to change, you, does somebody want to take chair? Does somebody want to? We can leave it alone.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I'm fine with it. I'll, I'll give it another year. I, I, that's, and we'll talk about it again next year.
Dude, does anybody else want a vice chair?
Really?
Well, no, no, in all seriousness, I'm not opposed, and, and the other, you know...
You've done vice chair a few times.
I've done it, I've been on for probably...
You're gonna do it September, too.
Are you willing to?
I'm, I'm absolutely willing to, you know, I am, like I mentioned at the last meeting, I, my son is coming in October.
Yep.
So I won't be here for the October meeting, that much I know. I plan to be back for November. But just in case, you know, everything looks great, kid's healthy.
Unfortunately.
We're all doing great, but...
Should take time with the kid.
You know, I definitely won't be here in October. So if we have, you know, if somebody feels that missing a meeting or two is reason not to be vice chair, you won't hurt my feelings.
Just because you listen to me?
Well, I know, I am committed to the board.
We all listen to you.
Not, not, yes.
Now, the prize is up, though, the clerk.
Do we, uh...
I know a guy.
You're the clerk, all, Ron, all you, Samantha takes care of it, all you do has to sign.
I know, I know.
But I'll tell you, I don't, I think it's a good thing. I mean, I'm, I'm good.
No. Anybody else want to be the clerk, or they get this?
Yes, someone should make a motion for you or whoever to be chair, and then a second, and then...
I make a motion, we retain the organization that we have.
I, I think we have to make them individually, so let me make the first one.
Okay.
I make a motion to appoint Sam Goodwin as chair of the zoning board of appeals for air.
Seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we have Mike Gibbons, vice chair for ARZoN board of appeals.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I make a motion, we keep Ron DiFlippo as clerk for ARZoN board of appeals. All of, somebody, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks.
You got it, Ron. You won again, buddy. All right. Enough of that, we'll close that discussion for another year. Um, next item on the agenda is a board discussion, overview of sample decisions. Yes, you did, that's what these are?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. So KB sent those, and then the last two are the last two decisions we did. That's what. One's for special permit, one's for air. So you can see the difference.
I write the ones that you sent in November much better than these.
Okay, thank you.
These I found were way too in-depth for the purpose.
All the first ones?
Well, a couple of them, they, they, they listed all the details of the meeting, all the evidence, you know, everything. And I don't really think that's necessary in the decision, because if the decision is appealed, then you have the video to review, you have the minutes to review. Um, it's, it's like you're rehearing the thing, just reading...
I kind of, I kind of like that. I kind of like that, to be honest with you.
You, you think that all that verbiage is necessary in the decision?
Only because, like, 20 years from now, if somebody goes back and reads this thing, they're gonna know. I mean, they'll almost know what time it ended.
Who'd be playing golf in Florida? Who cares?
God willing, I will be, but...
No, Florida will be under water.
There are points.
That's true.
I will say the more information included is more helpful, because I have had people come back looking for decisions from the 90s, going, what happened? And sometimes, depending on who wrote what and what happened.
Sure.
I don't know, sometimes they can be info they want. Um, but it is also helpful for the applicant, and it's helpful for you guys to remember, or the board who comes after you. You're not gonna be here forever.
Point.
I like the detail.
I do, too.
I, I did like the Nisoya decision.
Yes, that was very well done.
Very well done. I liked it a lot.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought I was, I thought the air one was better than any of them.
I did. It's great.
And I have, one of the things that has sort of changed in ours, that I did take from, wasn't any of these, I think it was Pepperell's, they gave all their applications case numbers, and I have referenced those in the decisions, so then you can come.
Do we have case numbers?
We do now.
Love it.
Who's recording them? You?
They're all in the files, they're, go in the official file. I include it when I give a copy to the clerk, so you should be able to find it later.
That's awesome.
In theory.
Does it, does it, uh, does it tie into the billing?
No, it's, it's strictly for the zoning board.
Well...
And then copies, if it, you know, results in a building permit, a copy will go in with the building permit.
So if, if it's a predecessor to a building permit, it would go to the building commissioner, right?
Yes, once this is all approved, I give an approved copy to Charlie, and we put it with the building permit, and away it goes.
Then we maintain the original. Yes, sir?
The planning board also, so Sam has implemented it with us on the planning board, so now when you have a variance, we can reference that number within my decision. So that, it's, it's been very helpful, actually, since Sam's done that.
Vice versa, too, if we need to.
Excellent.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
And, and I've actually been working on the building department files, and I've listed all the ZBA decisions on the front, so if you pull out your address, you'll know that you had five ZBA decisions at some point.
Oh, really?
That's cool.
Are you doing, are you making these retroactive or no?
Um, I will. I've only gone back the last two years, so...
It's still a lot.
Yeah.
It's great. Shoot.
It's pretty impressive.
Nice work.
Very nice. Thank you.
Those are included in the decisions now, so that you know what documentation it exists.
All right, excellent.
Great, great. So the only other thing I would say, um, in terms of board discussion, are we meeting next month? Sorry.
At this point in time, no. The filing deadline for the August meeting is the 30th, so we do have a little more than, just about two weeks.
Couple weeks, okay.
There may be...
You don't think there's anything in the pipeline?
There was one person who might need one, and she was a little iffy on whether or not she was gonna apply, and there was some sort of cost things with that, so she was iffy. If she does, it might not be August, it might be September, so...
All right, well, speaking of August and September, I'll be here in August, but I'm pretty sure I'll be out of the country in September.
I'll be here for both. Um, but the only other thing is, tonight's discussion with our new rules and regs went exactly how I want it to go. I maybe didn't agree with where we ended up on it, but that was perfect. We talked about the shape, one of us had an opinion, everybody else, eh? These, that document we put together is a huge help.
Aye.
Huge help.
Yeah, absolutely.
It was perfect. Is that what you got?
Yep.
That's it?
Anything else? Other board discussion, yes, John?
I'm gonna talk a little bit about this Mullen rule.
Oh?
The Mullen rule.
The one where if someone's absent, and they sign a document, they can, if they miss a meeting?
Sure. Oh, yeah, I remember, all right.
What about it?
Okay. So it says you have to sign this document, and I just thought that we should have a document that we just add to our, um, our rules and regulations, just so that if you show up at, at a meeting and you had missed one, and we haven't prepared a document for you to sign. So I found this one from, it's from Douglas, Mass., and it's very simple. Matter of fact, I, I made copies for everybody if you want to read it. But it, it's just, it just states that, you know, in accordance with the law, that you have, you have reviewed the materials and...
And Sam, it looks like you're about to pass out the same thing.
I, I used the Douglas one.
Yeah, this is the form that I put together for the Mullen rule, for the planning board.
And then I adopted it for you guys.
Okay, so you already have one?
Yep, we do. If you guys want to look, I have two copies. If you guys want to look, I have two copies.
Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Sorry.
Yeah, we actually had to just use it for the first time with Ken on two projects, so I prepared it for it.
Do we have to adopt that or anything?
No, you don't have to. It's already within the, because when we adopted the state dialogue, the form doesn't have to be as part of it, but I already have it as part of our.
Yeah, but I just wanted to make sure that we had one available to us if we come to the table. The other thing that the law says is you have to sign that you have watched the video. The other sign never, such evidence included the audio or video recording.
It's on that form.
So it's right here?
Okay, the issue I have with that is it's very hard to get to those videos, because they're not posted.
Yeah, they're not uploaded quickly.
From one meeting to the next.
Yeah.
So.
And so I went to APAC and I asked them, and I says, how can I find these meetings? Said, you go to YouTube, which you can. I did find the June 26 meeting, but there is no rhyme or reason to this thing. You have to search through. And I searched for ARZBA meeting, and it brought up everything in the side of Boston. And they're not in any date order or anything else, so you have to scroll through, you'll be looking at 2017.
If, I mean, yeah, it is, it can be a little tricky sometimes how it's set up. If you want, I can always send a direct link to it.
Sam did that for me once. She sent me a video, or the link to the video.
Yes, so as for the town's website, they know, the video doesn't get posted until the minutes are approved on the town's website.
Okay, as long as it's available to the person who missed the meeting before the meeting.
Yep.
You know, and you send out the meeting notice or something, you can just include it because somebody needs it, or whatever.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good, I just wanted to make sure we had a plan.
Yes, we have a plan. Just haven't needed it yet.
And if there is ever an occasion where the video is not available, reviewing the meeting minutes is enough, too.
It says in the law that's not acceptable.
It, it's. It says meeting minutes, video, and/or.
And then, and then the last line says the minutes are not acceptable.
The law said that?
The statute 23D from Massachusetts General State Law.
I think I remember that, too. We must have gone to the same training class.
Yeah.
We'll double check that.
Yeah, I'll double check.
Like a transcript, maybe, but the minutes, I think.
We don't have a transcript.
That's right, we don't have a transcript.
We have minutes.
It's audio.
And those are not acceptable.
Yeah, because the meeting minutes, the meeting minutes are not word for words, because it's not the exact verbiage, so. I think he actually might be right.
Now, can we get?
I'll look at that.
Do we have the ability to pull a transcript from the end of a Zoom meeting? I bet you do. It's one of those weird hidden features.
Yeah, I'm probably sure.
I'd have to dig.
And I can help you with it if you, if, yeah. I've done it before.
Yeah, because I know there's like, it records as you're speaking, and it keeps tab, like, like.
Kind of.
We can see, if we had to. The video is.
We'll double check this in my one.
Okay, well, the only point is, I just wanted to make sure that there was a process, so if somebody was gonna come to the meeting that had missed one, that they would be able to have the evidence they need in order to sign the document.
Yep.
Have we done that?
Not yet.
No, I don't think we had.
Part of it is you have an alternate, so.[1691.92]